It's about 7:00 PM. And I'm going to call the meeting of the Eastlime Ad-Hoc Committee on Short-Term Rentals to order, and will stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to public delegations, I just wanted to mention, this is off-agenda, but it's just mostly procedural, that Anne Cacciallo and myself are continuing our work. Oh, did I say Anne? Oh, my God. That's because she always sat there. Yes, I'm sorry. Anne Thurl and myself will be continuing our service, serving on this committee. And the Board of Selectmen changed the charge to allow for that. And we have an ex officio, Candace Carlson, who's here this evening. So that's the process that will, going forward. Anne Thurl. Okay. All right. Public delegations. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Take the podium. Anyone here?
Can we talk at the end, or?
If it's anything concerning the agenda, anything on the agenda, it's best to do it at this point, because we really don't have a public opinion item on the agenda later on the agenda. So, public delegations is your opportunity.
Yeah, we'd rather talk at the end. A couple minutes.
So, this is the agenda item for which you're given the opportunity to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Okay, sure. And just, oh, careful. We're full of all kinds of traps today. And state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Sure thing. My name is Dr. Konstanti Vafidis. I'm one of the owners of 44 Shore Road. And I just want to kind of sum everything up. I know we've had a lot of discussions about this. So first, I wanted to sum up the facts. So let's examine some of the facts. The police reports from our Oak Grove Beach Association, they paint a pretty clear picture. They show that there has been no significant disturbances warranting any type of concern. I know you guys had called the Chief of Police of Eastlime himself, and he has also confirmed the absence of any widespread issues related to these rentals. And furthermore, the fire chief, I remember in one of the earlier meetings, stated something similar, that there has been any, a lack of safety hazards or any significant parking problems. So, you know, it is quite interesting as to why this committee persists. Why is it targeting Oak Grove Beach Association as a problematic area? In fact, we also had presented in one of the initial meetings, a lot of the police reports. And I think in the last three years, specifically in Oak Grove, there's been only two calls to the police. So the answer unfortunately is simple, but yet troubling. The committee exists, and it sounds like to serve the interests of a few individuals within that local association, not the community at large. So, most of the evidence that has been presented doesn't show any major problem areas. I know you guys keep mentioning Oak Grove as being the, you know, the dedicated problem area, but where is the evidence to support that? I think it's the result of three individuals, three neighbors unfortunately, that may have, you know, some ties to some of the selectmen to create, that may have, you know, instigated and created this committee to call it the problem area. So, you know, I think the hard evidence is probably the, one of the most important facts, you know? And that evidence is, you know, what we should really look at is from the police chief and the fire chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure. Same thing, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is George Vafidis, part owner of 44 Shore Road. I would like to start off with, in order to have an ad hoc committee formulated from the beginning, there should be some evidence, we want to see initial emails that were sent from one another to create and formulate this, you know, meeting. Usually, an ad hoc has positive and negatives type of information, you know? But the way it sounds, it's like targeted to our area as a whole community of Eastlime. We spent, we dedicate our lives, we care more about our beach house than any other person, you know? We don't want our house destroyed. We pay taxes, we have big mortgages, my father enjoys the property. But again, this subjectively seems very, it just looks more discriminatory towards us. And we don't want this to go further on, you know? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your free time.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Spiro Kers. I'm a family member of 44 Shore Road here. You know, I was going to write a couple things down today. I've been to three out of the last four meetings. I've heard all the talking points. And, you know, I didn't write anything down, because I just want to speak from the heart about the type of dedication that we have to, you know, maintaining this property, you know, constantly checking up on everything, from the safety hazards. I know that has been a major talking point of this committee, the last couple of meetings, you know, enforcing some kind of person that will come in and check on how the upkeep is at this certain property. And trust me, it's constantly kept up to the highest standards possible. There is no one outside of us, you know, that is making sure that the people who are coming in are having the best possible experience. They are safe, they are well taken care of. Any problems that do arise, you know, we show up immediately to take care of these issues. They're always minor issues. There are never major issues that these people have, and we are always there to take care of these things as quickly as possible. There's also nothing, you know, more heartwarming than having people from out of state come in, telling us how beautiful this town is, asking for recommendations, where to go to eat, where to go to have a sip of coffee, you know, where to go enjoy a nice pastry, you know? Thank God, we have amazing places in this area. You know, Flanders Fish Market is always getting, you know, recommended. All the bakeries that we have in this area, Cafe Soul, Sift, you know, the beautiful features of this town that we have all come to love over these years. It is just, you know, the factual evidence is just there that there is nothing really negatively affecting this town when it comes to Airbnb. We have heard from management agencies, we have heard from, you know, different authorities in this town that gather data on visitors and, you know, travel agencies, and they have all just presented, you know, hard facts about the benefits of Airbnb in this area. So I, you know, hopefully you guys have strongly taken those into consideration going forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll, I see no other public here, so I will close public delegations. And just for the record, understand that in following public delegations, we do not comment as a board to what you say. I mean, comment later or whatever, but not at this time. There's not a give and take back and forth. Okay, so with that, I will move on to item three on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of our November, regular meeting of November 20th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Some.
Some, okay. A second?
One second.
Yes? Okay, great. And any discussion, any correction about the minutes?
No.
I just have a spelling correction, if you don't mind, Brooke. I think the Supreme Court, the case that's now before the Supreme Court, I think it's spelled W-I-H-B-E-Y, and I see it throughout as W-H-I-T-T-Y. So it's W-I-H-B-E-Y is the spelling of that. And just-
I do have one comment. I'm sorry, I didn't notice it.
Yes.
So I moved my piece. It says present here in the meetings, it has my name there. I was not here at last meeting, on the 20th.
Okay, great. Thanks for that, Dan. And then, one other small thing, but under item five, which is on page two of the minutes, so there's one, two, three, four lines down. There was a municipal election last week, and some members who are on this committee, and I think it should really say, will no longer be serving on the boards or commissions, because at that time, when we were at the November 20th meeting, we were still members under the previous, you know, under our previous service. So, because they don't, you know, it just may lead one to think that we were on that committee that day with sort of floating out there, but we, so just, you know, basically, so it should say, will no longer be serving.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, since we're making a couple of corrections, but that's it for me. Thanks. All right. So with that said, I will take a vote, and all those in favor of approving the minutes of November 20th as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Dan will abstain.
Obstained, Madam Chair.
Okay. Paul and Dan will abstain. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four, and I think in your emails, and we have extra copies, if you didn't print it out or bring a copy, we discussed, item number four is discussion of possible action concerning findings, goals, and way to address concerns. And there's a draft of our goals and suggested regulation based on our last meeting. So just kind of a summary, and we really kind of went up and down the desk here, and this is my attempt at least at summarizing what was said, and definitely based on the minutes provided by Brooke. So if you don't have a copy in front, Brooke has made some extra copies, so-
I have a question about this, since I missed last week.
Yes.
When we sit, when we have a title like suggested regulation, this isn't something we decided to suggest last week. These are proposed, or these are to consider?
Right.
They haven't been decided on by this group?
Correct. This is a, right.
Okay.
And the head of the, above the section where it says goals, above that, under where it says draft, these, the goals are expressed by the committee members, and it's a working document, as you can see in that last sentence. It's a working document to be further discussed and refined before we make any kind of recommendation to more selectmen. It's just a starting point, you know? And that's why it's called a draft, you know? And we definitely will be, I think, I wanted something to work off of, you know, instead of us kind of repeating ourselves all the time. If we see it in print, that this is what we said and what we concluded, then we can have further and more detailed discussion. So, so that's where we're at. So I, you know, I'm open to, and did everyone have a chance to take a look at this? And if you, I can give you a minute here, if you want to refresh your recollection of it, or if it's, if you weren't here the last time, at the last meeting, good to take a moment and just take a look, especially under suggested regulation. But my thinking was, we've gone through some fact finding. I know we're not complete in our fact finding, hence the public hearing number two that we suggested will happen. But, once we did that, it was time to do some goal setting. And that was reinforced to me by that video. I don't know if anyone else has-
Yes.
It was very good.
Okay. And I think that was a main takeaway for me, from that video, is that you better set some goals before you attempt to regulate. So, and again, the suggested, if you look under goals, these are suggested regulation. One of the goals is, you can do nothing about all this. You know, you can, you know, there's like a scale of zero to 10 on types of things you can do, so.
I just had a question about number eight. It seems like a world hunger type of thing, affordable, you know, addressing affordable housing. I'm not sure if this committee's in a position to take that on.
So, yeah, that was actually a goal I had suggested. And basically, it's because there is the argument being made by folks analyzing the short-term, effect of short-term rentals, one argument that is made is that it does affect the pot, if you will, or the amount of affordable housing. So, it's a goal perhaps, if a town is struggling to have sufficient affordable housing, one way to think about that is to watch this happen in the, let's say, in the market of short-term rentals, that they're not so usurping all of the available smaller homes that could be home, starter homes, let's say. I think that's something that's in the literature, I know much of the literature that-
Maybe a better way to say it would be considered the impact on affordable housing, rather than addressing affordable housing.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going after affordable housing-
So, addressing-
-as part of our charter, yeah?
No, it's, I mean, yeah, I mean, it can be a goal, it cannot be a goal too. So if that's your opinion, that's fine. I just think that, that there will be some connection, you know? Whatever we, whatever we come up with, if we come up with something and don't do, and take some steps, I think it can have an impact. So maybe it should say impact or something, you know, or-
I think the affordable, I mean, that seems to be the catchphrase in the literature-
Yes.
-is affordable housing. Maybe a better way to say it, because we also have affordable housing as an issue-
Yes.
-in Connecticut. Maybe say the impact that short-term rentals have on the cost of housing, the cost of rents, the availability of rents when these homes are taken off the market, so that people cannot live there, they're just renting it. So, you're right, impact on cost of homes as opposed to-
Yeah, because-
-affordable housing. I mean, it's a common argument being made throughout the world, the impact it's having on cost and availability, it's an argument that Anne and I, so everyone sees, it's all over the place.
Yes, yes, it's everywhere.
So that's why it's an issue that needs to be discussed, whether it's a, I don't think she's making a comment that it's a good issue or bad issue, it's just a-
I'm not saying that either, I just didn't think it was our-
Although interestingly, it is a goal of our plan of conservation and development. It is something addressed. And the planning commission has, you know, has gone through, you know, having a, you know, having a study done as to ways to improve and increase our affordable housing in town. So I, again, I'm not, you know, judging one way or another, but I mean, I think it's not, it's not unheard of to say that that is a, that it seems to be, would be a reasonable goal, is that you would want to help increase that housing stock of affordable housing. And it doesn't, it can be that span, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be within the legal definition of, you know, 830G.
Right.
You know, it can be just more affordable housing for folks. But, but I, unless, I mean, Anne, you're familiar with the P O C D as well, so I believe it is a goal.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but to me, it's almost, the emphasis is maybe more on available housing, because a lot of the housing by the beaches aren't so affordable.
Correct.
I mean, they're very expensive properties by the beaches, but I've seen so many people want to come in town and buy them, but they're constantly outbid by investors that can pay more to turn it into an Airbnb, and it drives the prices up, and then there's not a lot of stock for people wanting to buy-
With that said-
-and live in town.
Yeah, with that said, what Dan said, how about impact on affordable slash available housing? I mean, you know, it just, it has, if you're going to regulate, then you're going to have some effect, or either impact or effect on available and/or affordable housing, I think, might be something that's, that's sort of an offshoot of what we're doing.
We've had many people come before us too, and with emails saying, the houses are so expensive, we can, we, the owners of these houses cannot afford them. So, you know, it sounds like an issue that's out there, and we just need to determine if it's an issue affecting Eastlime.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may weigh in?
Sure.
Thank you. Affordable housing by definition speaks to deed-restricted housing, for the most part, not market-rate housing. So if you're going to address, in my view, this committee is going to address housing overall, then it should eliminate any specific type of housing that we're talking about that's going to be impacted, especially affordable housing, because I agree with the statement down the other end, I would say a vast majority of the short-term rental houses would never be available or considered for deed restriction, affordable use. So, not that affordable housing is not a valid goal and something perhaps another committee should gather and work on, but I don't think that this committee's charge for short-term rentals would need to talk about affordable housing. You want to talk about the impact of using housing stock up overall, you know, I think that might be, you know, a goal that we could talk about, but to specifically call out affordable housing, I don't think that quite fits with our charge.
Yeah, I mean, I suggested the, you know, the amendment to that line, which I think is okay. And I, when I wrote affordable, I wasn't necessarily referring, and the literature generally doesn't always, it's not signaling out, you know, something like our statutory framework. So, in general, there's this reference to affordable or, you know, first homes, this kind of thing, less expensive homes, homes that are not, you know, that people can afford because they, you know, they're living in communities where there isn't, there aren't price wars on things. So, yeah, so it's not taken to mean, you know, the deed-restricted homes necessarily. So, but I think the availability of homes is, you know, probably more generic, if you will.
Right.
Okay, so, so are there any other goals that anyone, that you don't see in this list, that you may say, you know what, I've been thinking about this, and this is troubling to me, and I would want to make sure that we address some of this particular issue?
I think it covers a lot.
I think we did a, I think we did a reasonably good job.
I'm happy to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
A comparison, if no one else is going to jump in.
Sure.
We're talking about a lot of potential regulations or requirements that this committee would recommend to the board about short-term rentals. And I'm glad that Attorney's Marcus here, because it, I wonder if we're falling into the same trap that led the case, the Whitley case, to the Supreme Court, you know, that if we say that specific regulations or requirements for inspections would be, would be forced upon short-term rentals of a period of time, whatever that definition is, and not have those same type of inspections imposed on long-term rentals, or year-round rentals, or any of the other, which seems to be the heart of what that Supreme Court conversation is about. One is a number of rental days versus a number of rental days. And now we're saying, well, let's put that aside, and we'll wait for that. But we can force inspections, or we can force other regulations on short-term rentals. My question is, are we going down a slippery slope that we may be challenged for the very same reason that the rental days were challenged? And I know we, you know, the committee is probably going to come out with some recommendations for some enforcement or whatever. I may or may not agree with whatever the final document is, but I would think about that long and hard, if we have especially the permissible zones for short-term rentals, lottery system for permits, enforcement and fines, you know, inspections, occupancy limits, you know, there are-
Yeah, so the suggested regulation, I guess I should have had a caveat there, they're not mutually exclusive, they're not taken as a collection, these were just, each of these items discussed at the last meeting were possible areas for regulation. So it's not like all 10 of these would be contained in a regulation, so-
Yeah, no, I get it. Well, my point is that we're targeting a specific use, a short-term rental use for these, and-
Right.
-the same rental use that led us to the Supreme Court could possibly lead us to the Supreme Court again with, if someone says, you're making me inspect something, but-
Yes, so-
Not the other.
Okay, so with that said, I actually, I guess I'll just bring it up now, because I was, it's, since you've raised that legal question, so I have, and we can discuss this after we go through, again, more goals, more suggested regulation, but I do, I wanted to put forth tonight perhaps a request for legal opinion from Attorney's Marcus on certain issues, and because I think we're at a junction and at a point that, as we're beginning to think in a regulatory fashion, we need to know how we're going to do it, and to what extent we're going to do it. So, you know, I have some ideas there. But I don't want to leave our conversation yet on some goals and just areas of concern for regulation. So I'll take a few more minutes to, you know, go over these lists again, if there's any area that, you know, if you've been watching a video, reading some of the literature, Greg McIntyre kindly forwarded a number of articles, so if you've seen those, is there anything there that sticks out at you, you know, that you would want to, you know, another area of regulation, or no regulation? Is there any thought about those kinds of things? Gary is, you know, we've, we've kind of-
I think Candace was-
As an ex officio, am I allowed to speak? I believe that I am allowed to have interaction, or no? Guide me there, because I have some-
Yeah, so-
Ex officios are allowed, they can't vote.
Yeah, you can-
That was my understanding.
You can jump in.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But you'll need a mic, so maybe take the, take the podium.
So, just listening, regulations. Are we prepared to monitor those? Do we have the infrastructure to do those things?
So-
Right?
Yeah.
So that's a question. And also, there's a lot of questions that are kind of, that I'm fielding is, you know, how much regulation, right? Because if somebody owns a home, that's their property. There are some people that are feeling as though that's invoking their rights as to what they can do. So I guess a good question is, how much regulation is good and how much is not? And then, of course, legally, I'm sure that we could be guided, but, you know, we certainly don't want to go too far, right? And take people's rights away and choices of what they want to do with their own homes and their own properties. So it's just a thought that I wanted to bring forward, not just my thought, but it has been brought to me, so I want to share it.
Okay. Thanks, Candace. Yeah, so, so if we look under number seven in that list, Candace, you'll find that, that the topic of enforcement and fines, we began to have some discussion. That would of course need great refinement, you know, once you, for whatever, however de minimis, however great your regulation, you've got to have some way of carrying it out and enforcing it. So that's in our heads, it's just that because we haven't gotten to the point of picking out the areas of regulation, if any, we haven't gotten to that junction yet, but it's in our heads, so.
I think, I think we need to make it clear that we have an obligation as a committee to discuss all of the issues, not to just say, oh, this is going to be an unpopular thing to talk about. We actually have to have those unpopular discussions. If it makes people uncomfortable, then we apologize. But to do our due diligence, we have to have those discussions. And we may have to discuss ban, an outright ban on short-term rentals, on short-term rentals, that has to be discussed, just so that we can say, we discussed it thoroughly. Because without that discussion, then we have not done what we're supposed to do. We also have to discuss- can say, we discussed it thoroughly. Because without that discussion, then we have not done what we're supposed to do. We also have to discuss doing nothing. Let people do whatever they want with short-term rentals. Their house is their castle, go have fun and do whatever you want. We have to discuss that option also, and everything in between, and all of the different possible regulations that, that are out there, we have to talk about them. We may conclude that none of them are any good. We may conclude that one is enough, or we need 10. But I think the consensus is, the more we have, the more trouble we're creating for us, for whoever's supposed to enforce this. So, so we're just brainstorming.
This is, yeah, it's.
And also the forums too. There's a forum that's going to be coming up, so that will be.
Microphone?
Yeah.
And you got to pull it down too.
I'm not used to it, okay.
Otherwise, the camera doesn't pick it up.
Yeah, that one is a little tricky.
Okay, so, for forums as well, right? So then we'll have Q and A from our community, because that's a real big part of the, the conversation as well, is what your community is talking about and what they're looking for and what they're thinking as well. So those forums, are there's going to be one, two, or what is the thought by the commission?
Yeah, go ahead, Ann.
We have had, we have had two and we're planning on one more, at least.
That's what I had seen. Okay, so only one more?
At least.
At least one more.
Hmm, okay.
That's definitely, it's been all, it's been very helpful because it wasn't, it's not only the fact finding, you know, of where issues have arisen, but it's, it also points to opinion, general opinion on property rights and the right to run a business within a residential community, et cetera. So we've had both fact and opinion in these, in the, in our public hearing and in delegations, because prior to the public hearing, we had a, a series of pub, of meetings, a couple of meetings where we had quite a few people speaking at public delegations. So that whole big pot of information, we've analyzed and Gary had put together, this is before your assignment as ex officio, Gary had put together a sort of summary of that, so I'm sure he can provide us with an additional copy of that for you. But, yeah, so.
So how about a follow-up to that one thought about banning short-term rentals?
Good, yeah.
If we were going to do that, would there be considered all short-term rentals that are existing today and the ordinance and ban starts tomorrow? Are the, are the short-term rentals in existence today pre-existing non-conforming? In which case, they couldn't be banned? So we may want to look at, do we want to have a, a registration? Forget about fines, forget about fees, just a registration of what it is.
Didn't, didn't give me an easy one, did you, Mr. Formica?
No.
Well, that's, so, I, I'm going to try to answer what Mr. Formica brought up, but I think it has to be put in a little bit of context. In reviewing the draft, first off, when we say regulation, I know we have discussed whether or not, if anything is going to be done, whether it's going to be via an ordinance or a zoning regulation, again, keeping in mind that a regulation would not apply to everywhere in town. So, I'm assuming for right now that when we say, that when there's the reference to regulation, that's just kind of an overarching term as to.
Yes, I, I use the word in its non-legal sense, in a broad sense of, of somehow controlling or regulating.
Sure, understood, thank you.
Rules and regulations.
Right.
And realizing that, as Mr. Formica pointed out, this is still a very, very fluid situation, especially in the state of Connecticut. Right now, basically, the appellate court has said you can't ban, you can't, you cannot put a timeframe on the rental of a residential property. That said, as I was looking through the bottom part with suggested regulation, there were three that stood out to me from a legal standpoint. The caps, the permissible zones, and the lottery system for permits. These all implicate or would impose restrictions or limitations on what the WIBBIE Court has already referred to as the indisputable right of an owner to rent his property. I'm not suggesting the committee do one thing or another as far as this goes, other than to note that you may want to proceed with caution on these three matters. Just, they implicate constitutional issues, due process, equal protection. As a matter of course, I just took a look around the country, for example. New Orleans, earlier this year instituted a lottery system. Two day, two weeks after the lottery was held, there were two lawsuits filed in federal court. The federal district court for the eastern district of Louisiana issued a temporary restraining order. Motions for summary judgment will be argued in front of the court in December. In Holland, Michigan, they banned short-term rentals in residential zones effective October 1st of this year. They defined short-term rental as anything under 28 days. They also instituted a cap and a lottery system. That is now before the courts in the state of Michigan. Austin, Texas, in 2016, had an ordinance that banned short-term rentals that were not owner occupied. The court in Texas ruled that that was unconstitutionally restrictive. It invoked the Commerce Clause and decided, decided that that, that that had to be struck down. Suburb of Cincinnati, Milford, Ohio, instituted an ordinance prohibiting non-owner occupied short-term rentals. The owners sued in federal court in September of this year. And in Wilmington, North Carolina, in 2020, they instituted a 2% cap lottery system on short-term rentals. They also put a, what they referred to as a 400-foot buffer zone between short-term rentals, so you couldn't have, you know, one, two, three or so in a row. The North Carolina Superior Court held that certain of those provisions were unconstitutional and the city rescinded the registration requirement along with the distance requirement and the cap. So, I bring this up just to point out that if the committee does look to in some way limit the ability of people to rent their properties on a short-term basis, not necessarily regulate it, but put a cap on who may or who may not, or to say this person may, this person may not, based on the lottery system, or as Mr. Formica suggested, you know, if you have a ban, does it move forward, does it move backward? All of these, all of these imply possible lawsuits being brought. They bring up constitutional issues. And again, I have not done a ton of research on this, this was more just for informational at this point, but especially for numbers four, five, and six, the committee may want to proceed with caution.
So what do we do with the fact, I've, I've been here a while now, and it seems as if East Line zoning does not permit short-term rentals.
That is true.
So, we have a, we, apparently we have a rule, something in place already that says people who are doing short-term rentals are violating the rules of East Line. So, how do we reconcile these two things?
Again, that, that goes back to the difference between a regulation and an ordinance. Yes, the East Line zoning regulations are permissive, as are all zoning regulations in the state of Connecticut, which means, according to the courts, if a use is not specifically permitted, it is not allowed. However, that was the same issue with WIBBIE. It was, they did not allow, those zoning regulations did not allow short-term rentals. The appellate court, however, kind of found a way around that when they saw that the sign regulations allowed the rental of residential units. They decided that meant that the zoning commission and thus the town was aware that property could be rented, therefore they were not going to say, you can't do it for 30 days or less if you can do it for 30 days or more. So, again, yes, you're, you're correct. Technically, the East Line zoning regulations do not allow short-term rentals. We have the appellate court saying that doesn't really matter, keeping, keeping in mind that East Line has a sign regulation very similar to the one that the association in WIBBIE had.
And, I'll go ahead, Ann, you have a question?
I just have, would you advise the committee, like, be put on hold until the Supreme Court in Connecticut makes a ruling?
I, certainly, anybody in my position is going to suggest proceed with caution. It's still, it's still a pending matter. We know what the appellate court says, but frankly, until the Supreme Court says, we don't have a final ruling, essentially. So, there's, there's certainly an argument to think about waiting.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Just, the comment was made that all short-term rentals in the town of East Line were in violation. There are a number of beach communities, I think there, how many of them have zoning? I know there are nine quasi municipalities, but I number.
Yeah, there, and there are three that do not have, pardon me, there are three that do have their own zoning, pardon me, yes.
So, those, if it were a zoning regulation, those, those communities could act on their own to say, we want it or we don't want it.
That's correct.
And, and therefore, it would not be in violation of.
Technically, yeah, that's, that's why, I'm sorry, sorry, may cut you off, apologize. That's why from the outset, we've suggested if the committee decides to recommend anything, it is our advice that it be an ordinance so it would apply townwide rather than the zoning regulations, which as you point out, would not apply to the three communities that have their own zoning.
That would kind of overturn the reason that those communities have their own zoning, though, if you just try to circumvent the zoning issue with an ordinance.
Well, true, but there are ordinances that apply townwide as well, so.
I, I agree, just.
Other ordinance, as you mentioned.
Sure.
Who has precedent there?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about comparing STRs to long-term rentals, and if we're going to apply one set of rules to STRs, how do we get away with not being fair, which is one of our goals, to LTRs? Are they considered to be the same thing? Are they two different animals in the law?
That's, well, that's, that's kind of the pending question before the Supreme Court right now. What the appellate court basically said is, if the town allows rentals of residential properties, the court and by extension, the municipality can't put a temporal limit on that rental term. So you can't say, you can rent your property for six months or a year to, you know, a lessee, but you can't do it to someone who's going to stay there for three or four, seven nights.
Okay. And therefore, it would make sense that we'd have the same regulation slash ordinance applied to an STR as an LTR, because they're really the same animal?
Agreed.
Essentially, as, as it's, unless, unless and until the Supreme Court decides otherwise.
But an LTR is definitely different in the law than a hotel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Of residential property, I should be clear about that.
Okay, yes.
So, would a, would a firmer legal standing for this committee to stop distinguishing between short-term and long-term and simply say rental housing?
Well, the, the committee's charge was to investigate and determine whether a regulation of short-term rentals was necessary. And if so, what if anything should be done about it? So, by, by the charge, the committee is to set forth and decide on the issue of short-term rentals.
Are we bound by that?
By the charge, yes. Yes, those are, those, that is the committee's marching orders.
So, we, we all seem to have similar legal concerns, which brings me back to my wanting to request of you, Mark, a formal opinion. Of course, it would have to be approved through the first selectman's office, but we still can make that request here as a group and that we are really at a point that we need that deeper dive, you know, into if we take a certain approach, let's say we take an ordinance approach, how does that interact with existing regulation, zoning regulation? Is it in contradiction of that? How does it affect the, the beach communities with their own zoning, without their zoning, without their own zoning? And, for example, how does it, a thought, a question I've had for some time, I think I mentioned it at one of the earlier meetings, was how would an ordinance affect communities within East Line that have homeowners' association regulations? So if you have a residential community that has an HSA that, that somehow, you know, has something to say about either short-term rentals or commercial enterprises within that, within that residential community, how does an ordinance interact with that? And the same thing with the covenants running with the land. If you don't have an HSA, maybe your, your little residential community has the more traditional method of, you know, writing these things that, you know, go with the land when there's a sale, and it would say something like, you know, we, we don't permit commercial enterprises here, we don't, and, you know, you have to live in the house that you, you know, that, in that, in that house that you purchased, or whatever it says. So how, what, what does that interplay? Because if you, if you have an ordinance, you know, you can begin to think of areas where that ordinance is going to potentially conflict. And then similarly, if you went the zoning route, you know, obviously there's people with the pre-existing use, it's not going to, you know, we have to address.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that, that one is an easy answer.
Yes.
If you decide to do zoning, A, we know it's not going to apply townwide, and B, as Mr. Formica and others have pointed out, people who've been doing it to this point would be allowed as a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Right.
So it would not apply to them as well.
And I, I see that we generally all understand that. It would be good to articulate that because then this, this legal opinion would also be part of the public record and folks would understand that the zoning approach for, for reasons, you know, A, B, and C, is not optimal.
I think about you. I think the committee is a committee. You know, we're not forcing regulations or ideas and we're not, you know, we're not telling the Board of Selectmen they have to act in this way. So I think regardless if the Supreme Court acted in January, April, or November of '24, we could still provide the Board of Selectmen with
Sure.
some of the research that we've done and say, you know, if we went zoning, here are the pros and cons. If we went ordinance, here are the pros and cons. And if we, if we don't.
That's why I think this.
Question while he's, while Mr. Mark is up there, is if, if the short-term rental is deemed non-permissible in a residential zone, is it permissible in a commercial zone?
We would, we would have to see. We'd have to see what the Supreme Court says.
That's still depending on what the court says.
But it's, what was given to the court was a fairly limited question. What they decide to do with it after all briefs are received and arguments are given, is anybody's guess. Generally, as the attorneys on the committee know, appellate courts try to decide matters on as narrow an issue as possible. If they can deal with it on a procedural issue and not get to the merits, they will. But at this point, it's really, it's really speculative. I wouldn't even hazard a guess.
So it's still the same question? It's not.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is.
Commercial or residential doesn't stand one apart, use for the other?
Not, not to this point, no. Not to this point.
That, so, so in terms of the Supreme Court case, that's another, you know, your, your thoughts on that legally and how
Sure.
it impacts our decision-making, because there are narrow question, or questions being posed there. The briefs will address that. We don't know how the case is, you know, and how parallel that case is, but it, from my recollection of reading the case, it's very parallel to our, their 1994 regulation, and that little enclave of Branford is very similar to our regulations in the town of East Line. I don't know about the beach community ones that exist, but I do know that's the case there. So your thoughts on that and how that impacts our work?
Sure.
And again, as, as Paul mentioned here, you know, we can certainly recommend, you know, areas of concern. We, there's a lot of things we can recommend, a lot of things we can share with Board of Selectmen, and we can still work to, in my mind, outside of this whole regulatory process, because noise and parking, I just have to get this out, but, noise and parking, which is number eight on our list, and we discussed this in many ways throughout various meetings, but those, those areas, you know, are outside of the areas of zoning and outside, you know, to a large extent. And we have a noise ordinance and the, the police commission, you know, if the roof's roofed as concerns parking. So, there are, there are suggestions that we can make as concerns those two areas that I think can be helpful. They're not going to solve the issue, but that was just like a short-term, I hate to use the word short-term, but a short-term solution to, or a more immediate solution to some of the issues. And I think we got that from listening also to Chief Finkelstein when he was here. So, there's a lot to suggest, but I do. So there's a lot to suggest, but I do think we're at that point, are we, are we, is there a consensus that, that we, we need that legal lay of the land at this point? Does that make sense to everyone? That would be helpful.
I don't think so, but, not that you're not helpful, Mr. Zamarca.
None taken.
I think we, I think we can guide our conversations around that and not touch the legal issue, because we don't know what the legal issue is.
Yeah, we're worried about what might happen. We don't really know what will happen.
And we have to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, and so, you know, you come back to where you say, long-term rentals are different than short-term rentals, and our charter is short-term rentals. Where we make our recommendation about short-term rentals, the board of selectmen has legal counsel. They can decide whether they want to expand that to all rentals, or try to push it through on short-term rentals, or just ignore us, you know?
Committee's pleasure.
If I may.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you for, you know, your assessment of other areas in the country. I know that you were looking at it saying, you know, well, this ignited a lawsuit, that one ignited another lawsuit, this one ignited a lawsuit. That's fine. I look at it as, we're not the only ones. Everybody in the country is having issues with short-term rentals and how to, you know, get a handle on this, right? And so I don't think that should, should slow us down, we should just be careful, right? I think as Gary pointed out, you know, yeah, we should, we should include all the options, but in any continuum, there are the ends, and one is banning, trying to ban all rentals, short-term rentals, which I do not support. And there's also the other end. What was the other end, Gary?
Doing nothing.
Oh, doing nothing, yeah, I don't support that either. So somewhere in the middle, I think is the right recommendation, and I think we've talked about it, but maybe we need to discuss it some more.
The middle?
The middle.
The middle, yeah.
I mean, I've, I mean, I very clearly stated the last time when you asked everybody for their input, I very clearly stated that what I expected to come out of this was a recommendation, at least, that we institute a permit process. In my mind, it would be across all rentals. That would be basically a CYA move, if you know what I mean by that, by the town, to prohibit any further future lawsuits. Because you are not discriminating against a group, you're just saying, anybody who wants to rent needs to get a permit. And then we can talk about, what does that permit require? You know, is it a small fee, some contact information? Anything beyond that, I haven't really wrapped my arms around. But I know there were people last time talked about some kinds of ways to enforce that, some other issues that are listed here, inspections certainly. And I get it that your house is safe, that's great, it's terrific, not everybody's is, right? And we're not just here for your house, we're here for all 185 short-term rentals in East Lime. So, you know, having said that, I think Anne's right, we've talked about a lot, I think we're narrowing down on the options, I think we can make a recommendation to the selectmen, and the legalities of it, the selectmen can decide whether they want to deal with that or not. That's what they get paid for, right?
Although I do, I, I do think that Attorney Zamarca has, has been, his services have been provided to us as a committee, so that when we make this recommendation, we certainly make the most legally sensible recommendation that we can, probably with, at least for flying, and chances of for flying. So, so that's why I'm at the point I'm at, which is, we have a lot of good ideas on some, you know, reasonable regulation or, or control, but I think if we know how that's going to look, and what its, what its potential impact is, I'd feel more comfortable making a sound legal recommendation to the board of selectmen. I wouldn't want to just dump that in their lap and say, we have these great ideas, but you're going to have to figure out, you know, what is, what is the appropriate mechanism to do it. And I think the mechanism part, unfortunately, is, you know, that is the toughest part, and Mark knows this, you know, it is, it is, it is difficult to figure out best approach, and considering the, the many lawsuits flying around the country, you know, and so forth. So, but that was just my thinking, that we, we need to, to, to sort of corral our, the legal issue, so at least we know, okay, we're looking at an ordinance, and ordinance could do this, you know, or if we don't do ordinance, and, and how ordinances would conflict with other things. So I just thought, I thought the legal advice is part and parcel of what we're offering to the board of selectmen. Oh, yeah, Gary, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, I, I agree with that. I mean, before, I think before we make a recommendation to the board of selectmen, we need to have this Supreme Court case finished. The more lawsuits around the country, the better. Let other, let other municipalities fight out these constitutional issues, we have federal courts around, and then we can benefit from, from those cases, just to see what other courts think about it. So I don't have an issue with rest of the country filing lawsuits.
Again, I was, I was merely pointing out that those three sort of stood out and had, had drawn the most fire.
Right, and I did the same today, I was looking at it, there's a lot of lawsuits, new lawsuits too.
Yeah.
Which is, which is good. Let, let them deal with that. And, but I do think we're going to have to ask for an extension so that we can include a sensible, factual opinion, I mean, we're fact finders, factual opinion, and it's going to have to have a little discussion of the law.
Right, absolutely, yeah, I mean.
Because by, because by the time it's resolved, it's a fact, so.
No, I agree. Okay, so, well, thanks, thanks, Mark, and so I, I, I would still like to make that request, along with our, our continued work and suggestions and refinement, that we, you know, just take that legal pause a little bit, and we just make sure that we're not going down a path, and I'm glad, for example, this information about the caps and so forth. I mean, this is, these are often touted approaches, you know, it's great, throw a cap on there, do this, do that, but they are more, they are more stringent and serious kinds of controls on homeownership, so, and what you do with your homes. So thanks for offering that advice today. Okay, so I think what I'll do, any other, just any other thoughts about any other examples? Like, I mean, we also had a very nice list, I, for those not here at the last meeting, there was the, be sure that you take a look at this, because this is the short-term, this is from our Southeastern Connecticut cog, and it had the updated chart of our local, you know, of, of towns in our area, Southeast Connecticut. Do they allow STRs in their community? Do they regulate them? If so, how? So this, this was updated in late October, as I mentioned at the last meeting, so, you know, and some, and you can go for yourself and check out, you know, that municipality's particular, you know, regulation, or read about it, we've had some newspaper articles, et cetera. So, but if anyone has any other thoughts about, again, this is a working document, and it's always tough when you put pen to paper, and everyone looks at that paper, and they're, oh my God, you know, what have you, what are you suggesting? But it's because this is what we said at the last meeting, and, and we have to, as Gary said, we have to have the, the tough conversations about, about these items. People suggested these things, so let's, let's chat about them.
So Madam?
Yes, go right ahead.
I don't mean to interrupt, but.
No, no worries.
I just wondering if we should just ask the question of the committee to, based on a number of, you know, the cog article and then the impact article, people start with a very basic registration program, which doesn't exist now. Is the, is the committee in favor of instituting a registration program? Is the committee in favor of instituting a registration program that says you must have adequate off-street parking? You must have occupation, occupants equal to the number of bedrooms on a particular formula? I mean, those are the simple, basic questions that I think that every one of these conversations that have been handed out to us have asked, but I don't, I don't think we've asked each other whether we want to start with that. And then we can kind of whittle away at some of these other things, and.
Right.
When we get to our decisions, if then we say, attorneys of market, go look through your wall of law books and see what you can, what you want to come up with, but maybe we can just eliminate some things that people just don't want to talk about, or.
And, and bigger than that, regulations ordinance, but before that, shouldn't we have a discussion, like you write number 14, consideration of all options? Should we do a pros and cons of doing nothing, and pros and cons of banning STRs? So that we at least know where we stand as a committee, whether we're going to take either of those roads, right? I would, based on what I've heard in the meetings I've been to, I don't think we're going to be down those two paths, but at least we have to have that discussion about them, as Gary said, to, to discuss those.
Attorney just said we can't, you know, we'd be on a slippery slope if we said ban or limit.
As I'm saying, let's put those pros and cons up there.
Right.
So we can say, as a committee, we've considered those things.
Right.
It's in the minutes.
That's fine.
This is why we thought what we did, and I don't know if it's proper to do a vote and say, okay, we're not going down that path at this point, or, or how that works.
Yeah.
But I'd suggest we start eliminating some things at the, in the big issues, and then maybe we zero in on the two circles, which are regulation versus ordinance, and what would those look like?
I would disagree.
Okay.
Because I think if, we do have another public hearing scheduled.
Mm-huh.
And if the committee goes into the hearing already deciding issues, then it seems to violate the need for the public hearing. So as fact finders, if we have, if we're contemplating another public hearing, we should go in, I think, with an open mind, and after the public hearing, when we close that record, we can then discuss it. I think it's a mistake to do it now, especially since we, in my opinion, we are not prepared to make a discussion, to have a thorough discussion on bans and taking no action. Because I have, other than what Attorney Zamarca has said today, I don't think we've had enough discussion of that, either one. So I think it'd be premature today to do that, on those two grounds.
Could we at least do pros and cons on what we know now?
Pros and cons are always good.
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
We've asked for legal opinion, we were provided legal opinion, that caps, permissible, permissible zones and lottery systems would be constitutional issues and thereby easily challengeable in court, which all comes with a form of a ban, so. I, I think we can go to a public hearing, having had discussions, say, yeah, we're thinking about regulations, or we're thinking about this, or we're thinking about that, and we're leaning in that direction, and the public changes our mind, then the public changes our mind, and.
I think, oh, go ahead.
I, I agree with, with Paul, that I think if we have another public hearing without at least giving the public something to react to, we're going to get essentially the same types of opinions we've gotten from the first two public hearings. If we can say, we're going down a path with these things as possibilities, then people can react to that. But just having another public hearing, I think it's going to be another 30 residents giving essentially the same share of opinions. I would be in favor of doing what Paul suggested, and is that Dan?
It's Dan, yes.
Of starting to look at these two big issues. Are we going to do nothing? Are we going to completely ban? And if we can coalesce around either eliminating those two things, or one of those things, then people will have an opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, you haven't thought about this, that, or the other.
Although it's probably a difficult line to, to walk, how about taking something in between these things, where we, we start to narrow and eliminate because.
Of?
Let's say, a legal opinion just given, or other thoughts that we have, and we, we start narrowing the field so we can hone in on at least some things that we feel we can do, but we leave open the possibility of revisiting those issues, should we hear different information. So, you know, if you've got great, I mean, this is just a, you know, just a hypothetical, but if you heard fabulous things about permissible zones, and they worked in 10 communities or something, and you hear this subsequently, I mean, our work isn't done, so we can always amend, correct, revisit, reconsider. So I, I feel as though, as a way of charging forward, we can, as Paul suggests, as you suggest, Gary, we can narrow. It doesn't mean that we're eliminating those things completely.
I think we could take some like opinion votes, they don't have to be like.
Yeah, we're not going to vote.
It doesn't have to be a motion, but you know.
Yes, correct, I agree with you. I think we can reach consensus.
You could say, okay, how many of you are doing nothing? And, you know, I think the answer's.
Yeah, I mean, there's no harm in us just doing that now. I mean, just for, you know, a, we've heard enough over the course of the last couple of months, so, you know, just a sort of consensus. Does anyone feel as though a, a ban is a possibility?
I think a ban needs to be considered, just because I, I don't think it's been discussed sufficiently.
And we do have the issue of the, the, of looking at our, or interpreting our zoning regulations as not permitting this use. I mean, that's, that seems to be accepted, even though we know that it still happens. That's the, the reality that we seem to be facing.
I mean, if I read the news correctly, I think, didn't New York put a ban?
Yes, there is a ban in New York City.
I mean, so, you know, it's not, you know, Timbuktu, it's New York City.
Right.
Airbnb, what does Airbnb stand for? Bed and breakfast?
Maybe.
Airbnb.
Yes.
So, you know, New York did it, so.
Yeah, and.
East Lime can consider it, I don't think, I just don't think we've considered it.
And NOINC does it, right? NOINC actually does ban them, so.
Correct. So, you know, if you want to do that, we could assign groups of people, or some of people can volunteer to make a presentation at the next one, someone can say, I'm in charge of making a presentation for doing nothing, someone for ban, someone for regulations, someone for ordinance, and then we can have a thorough discussion of it, of the four options.
Anne, you were going to say something?
No, I was just wondering if we all agree about the doing nothing. I think everybody thinks maybe something should be done. I didn't know if we could get rid of that one.
One thing? One thing? It's like a Christmas list here, okay.
Personally, I'm always in favor of doing nothing. But as a board, maybe we can't do that, I'm not sure.
I, I think, yeah, with everything that we have listened to so far these months, yes, go ahead, Candace.
Thank you again. I don't believe doing nothing is really even an option, so considerably to remove it, I, I think that would be fair, so to look around to maybe get consensus on that. And just a little bit on a ban, it's constitutional, it's your rights, and it's huge. So I understand having a conversation around it, but I appreciate the attorney and him speaking about kind of what's going on, and just because New York does it, doesn't mean East Lime does it, or maybe it does mean that East Lime does it, but nobody's going to know that unless a lot of people in this community have the opportunity to speak. You don't just go ban something. That's all I have.
Thanks, Candace.
So, Madam Chair, if we could, if we could, if we could have a show of hands for how many people would support doing nothing?
Sure, let's, let's do that. So we'll, based on Greg's statement there, is there, show your hand if you, if you wish to do nothing, and we end, we end our existence as a committee.
You know, I mean, aren't we difficult? But if our, if our current ordinance is.
Did you just raise your hand, Gary?
Yes.
Sorry, did you just raise your hand?
I did.
And you said you didn't want to be difficult? I think that's a lot to worry about. Because there's one, two, three, four, five, so there's seven of us who didn't raise our hands.
But if our current, just current laws and regulations are sufficient as written to control the issue, and we just have people violating those laws, then maybe our laws are sufficient as written, and we just need to then. are sufficient as written, and we just need to then enforce it against people. I, I, I just haven't...
But that would still be doing something, enforcing the current law.
Well, I, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This, look, this is how, this is an analysis and all.
Yeah.
So, and I was not prepared to make a complete analysis of all four today. But yes, I can vote for all four of them if you want.
All right, so...
I could vote for doing nothing, you know, in terms of recommending ordinances and regulations and things. I mean, there's, there's plenty of options that we can do within the framework that you're talking about. Police chief came, and we asked him, are there any issues? And he said, I've not gotten one complaint from a short-term rental. That doesn't mean complaints weren't thought about, and maybe they should have been made, but the fact is that there, there aren't any. So we could very easily make the argument that things are going along fine.
I, I don't remember him saying that. I remember him saying he would have no way to know whether it was a short-term rental or somebody loaning it to their kids versus somebody having a good party that lives there all the time. I think that's what he said. He's not saying he's never showed up in it. He's just saying he doesn't have the data.
I, I thought he said that there was nothing that specifically said coming to a short-term rental was an issue.
He has, he has no idea if he's coming to a short-term rental. Which brings us back to the permitting system.
And, and what he emphasized was that more information is always better, and we are operating in something of a vacuum here. We really don't know how many houses are being rented.
We, we can check on Airbnb and, you know, get a clue, but that is just what's, what's there on those sites, and we don't know what's happening in the, the underworld of it.
So then going back to something that Paul had mentioned as far as registering, right? Because to my knowledge, there's quite a few short-term rentals in the community, and it's been, got past practice. Does that come into play at all via the attorney? I mean, if they've been, to my knowledge, it seems as though people have been renting out their homes for a very long time here in our community, right? So if there's been something in place where they shouldn't have been, it's been going on, and they've been doing it, right? So to take it away, register all of the short-term rentals that way, when and if there is a complaint, right, our police officers are going to be going, and then there's going to be some sort of registrar of it? It's just a thought.
So I threw out a number of 175. It's actually how I got that number, was by going on Airbnb and NVRBO, so that, I'm sure that it's, it's not 100% overlap, and I suspect that the 175 is a minimum for the various reasons that have been talked about here, that people are renting through real estate agencies, or renting through their friends, or renting through their cousins, or whatever. So at least the minimal aspect of that is 175. And I agree with you completely that people have been doing it for a long time in all these neighborhoods. It's just in the last five years, you know, the, trying to think of a nice way to say this, the, the professional Airbnb and VRBO owners are coming in in the last five years, and it's, it's different. And I struggle with how do I, how do I differentiate between my neighbor down the street over here who actually lives in his house two, two months every summer, and actually has a son live there for six weeks or whatever, and also rents it, you know, many times, versus the Airbnb, and actually not even your house, the Airbnb across the street, who just turnstile rents it two, three days at a time.
Right.
But I have yet to come up with a, you know, with a, with a way to figure out, to differentiate between those two. And I suspect that any way we try to do that is going to end up in the same place that a lot of these other towns have.
So one of the things that I've grappled with over the years is, Attorney O'Connell likes to use this term, is the camel's nose in the tent. And, you know, we can say, let's, let's have registration. I think we could probably find a 90-plus percentile of people that would say, well, we agree with the registration process. You fill out your name, your address, number of bedrooms, number of parking spaces, you fill out that, and you, you contact number, and you give it to whomever, the zoning enforcement officer, or, I don't know who that would go to if it were an ordinance, a town, the first selectman's office probably, or for, or the town clerk. And I think we could probably get that. But as things move along, then that could turn into a $200 fee, or a $500 fee, or that legislative creep that happens over time. But I think it would be reasonable to suggest a registration process. I think it's unreasonable to, to ban. I think I wouldn't agree with that, but I think starting that and then providing a couple of opportunities to the Board of Selectmen, and saying, if we had a registration process through zoning, what would occur? If we had it as an ordinance, what would, what would occur? And I think that we can move along under those issues and then let them, you know, decide whenever the Supreme Court gives them guidance as to how they're going to proceed.
Right. And that's something, right? So that's better than doing nothing. It's kind of addressing some of the issues, but then also possibly a permit, a permit type of process, along with the registration. It's basically a business, right? I mean, this is kind of what this is, short-term rental, they're making a business. So, you know, possibly a permit as well could be an option to bring forward. I'm just going to put that one out there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Sitting here listening to all this, and the, I think on the, you know, the court action, whether Supreme Court comes down or not, the last time Attorneys Zomarka talked about too, they're dealing, they might just come down with whether it was pre-existing or existing, because that was part of the law, going back to either 63 or something, or 93, or whatever. So, so I didn't get the feeling that it was going to be totally on point to this particular issue, but since all these other discussions that Attorneys Zomarka's talked about, cities, Greg has talked about, we've read New York, we've read, you know, gotten the articles, I've gotten on mine on the internet every day, you know, stuff coming in about Airbnb's around, not only the country, the world. So I think the, you know, other people will get to the bottom of it on legal and constitutionality issue. So I think if we look at it, you know, I guess I look at it, and I don't think our little group here is going to decide the world's events on this subject, and so, but I think the things we can look at, Greg had mentioned registration, I think that makes, you know, all the sense in the world. I think it would be of us to put some of the points out, so that we do have another public hearing, that, you know, people can comment specifically on some of our issues, although the most, you know, we do have to remember that in any public hearing, most of the people who would speak are against any particular issue, and the silent majority does not attend. But it would definitely give us something. I think registration makes all sense in the world. I think a permitting fee, clearly. I think that the, I think it should go to the assessors' office, and ultimately, I believe that they should, you know, people have Airbnbs, you know, especially if they're predominantly on a, you know, a full-time basis, their Airbnbs, you know, over some, you know, distinction, you know, if it's more than 20% of the year, or 25, or some number, I think they should be required. I do look at it as a business. I think it's a business in a commercial zone. I think the state has charged a sales tax on it, so I think that makes it clear. I think as such, I think that, you know, we have no reason, we can also do the same, by the way, too. We have the authority to do a sales tax. Secondly, I think that you clearly, you know, should, should submit, you know, not only, you know, real estate tax forms, annual income and expenses, and should be valued as such. And, and, you know, if it's a profitable business, then it's going to be valued either at the higher of the home, home value, or the value of the business. And because if it goes up for resale, it will be, it would be resold on that basis also. And, but if it, if you don't have forms going in to do that, you know, you'll never, this town will never know, and if it's never sold, they're, you know, getting the benefit of, and us as taxpayers, you know, we're not, you know, we're not getting the benefit of somebody paying your first thing, you know, fairness in that subject. And I think that, I don't think that's unreasonable. I think that if you're going to be benefiting from it, and I think that as, you know, commercial owners, all commercial owners who have businesses have to submit profit and loss statements annually, and, and they're getting taxed and judged and valued accordingly. And this is, you know, clearly a business. I think there is a lot of constitutional issues when you have a business in a residential zone, but I don't think we're going to solve that problem. I think an ordinance makes sense, you know, and the other thing is enforcement. But at least if you have, if you're, it's easy to see if somebody has, and if they don't file the forms, then there's, then the assessments are automatic, you know, 10% or 25% or whatever it is, and, and, you know, and it's, it's some form of assessment and some form of penalty. But the idea of somebody not, today, if it's not permitted, and we try to stop somebody, how do you enforce it? The only way you can enforce it, I believe, is to file a lawsuit, to tell, file a lawsuit on somebody. So we're not going to file 175 lawsuits, obviously. I mean, there's a practicality of all this. So I think that, I think we could down to, we could sit here for months, but I mean, the reality is, I think what Gregory, you know, suggested, you know, the registration, we register it, once you're registered, we put a permitting fee, whether it be, you know, $500 or something, or whatever, whatever that fee is. I mean, these obviously are, these are profitable operations, you know, and, you know, many of these are assessed at extremely low values and paying very little on taxes and charging an extreme amount of money per evening, and I don't, and I'm, I believe in capitalism, and, and I have nothing wrong with that, but on the other side of the coin, there is, you know, we all have to pay our fair shares. Every one of us who own businesses and real estate, you know, have to pay, you know, have to pay their fair share too. So I do see a distinction. I, I think the state sees a distinction in charging a sales tax. I see no reason why we wouldn't tack on, you know, you know, could, could consider a sales tax also, which would make some sense. I mean, other cities do, and the, and towns, and then the, but clearly, to me, it's an assessment point of view, and, and it's, and to me, that's very simple. I think that the, I don't think we can stop, the police chief is very clear about that, on the parking issues, you know, if we have a parking issue, we go to police commission, try to get the road, you know, but even, you know, and, you know, and so I think the, you know, banning it, you know, that's got many, many constitutional issues, so I think we leave that up. Personally, I think that we shouldn't try to solve the world's issues, and doing nothing doesn't seem appropriate to me, and the, but, you know, banning it doesn't either. So I think that we have to look at it from a practicality point of view, and maybe address it differently than most towns, and, you know, and, and just, you know, looking at it, what we can do, and I think an ordinance does make sense, because it would go across all the associations and, you know, and make it, you know, fair throughout the, you know, and then, by the way, at the same situation, at the, the ones that do have taxing districts, you know, obviously, assessment values, then we'd follow through on that too. It would, you know, so, so I do think that the, you know, doing something, but I think we have to look at what's practical, what we can do, without, you know, going into such issues that are going to cause constitutional issues, and make it very simple for the, you know, the, you know, the Board of Selectmen to look at something that's, you know, practical. And I think doing nothing is not fair to the other people in this town who pay taxes, and banning it is not fair to people who are running, running, running Airbnbs either. So I don't think, I think this is, this is a middle ground, you know, and a, you know, and a practical one, and, you know, the more success they have, the, you know, the more the state's going to benefit, and the more the town's going to benefit, and I think that's, we should encourage that, and that's what capitalism is about. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks for that. And I know you had spoken previously about the assessment issue and valuation, and I think that's an important, and very important, if we're considering, if somewhere, you know, in the, in renting properties, that we cross some sort of line between an occasional renting of a property and then actually making a living from it, or making an income from it. Okay, so...
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I, I think what we're struggling with is that we need a mechanism here.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Paul approached it by saying, you know, well, let's just go down the list and say, how many are in favor? I think that's, given the success of commercial operations, I would be willing to follow that. However, I have a suggestion in terms of what Gary might say.
Right.
Chatello, and I would say, if we're okay with these suggested regulations, the list here, with the exception of maybe four, five, and six, we can talk about that.
Right.
We could come to our next meeting, each one of us could take one of these, and try to summarize what we found from all the literature and all the reports and all the towns and all the, you know, whatever we can find out there, about what kind of registration systems are there, what kind of permitting processes are, what fees do they charge? You know, each one of those, we could have a little mini, kind of special report on, that the committee could then look at, and then we would have, as Gary would say, we'd have a rational mechanism for doing what Paul wants to do, which is to vote on each one of these, instead of just saying, well, I'm all about noise in parking, you know, but I don't really know. I mean, I really haven't gone back and looked at it, okay? Inspections, how many of the people that do registrations actually require inspections?
And what does that look like, and who does that?
Yeah, and I'm not saying that one person has to do all this, each one of us could take a piece.
Yeah, well, there is one, two, three.
What about home businesses? I'm an attorney, I've been working from home since COVID, I, you know, I'm saving $5,000 a month not having a rental unit for my office, so, and I moved, my secretary comes over and, and either works from home, or she, you know, and I have a good business in there. I mean, are we, is that the same? It's a commercial enterprise, it's a residential opportunity. How do we handle that?
It's not generating, it's not generating, it's not generating income. It's, it's, you know, in, in, looking at it, Paul, in regards to, as a zoning issue, you mean, is it allowed or not allowed? Because you're right, because home offices and some jurisdictions are allowed, and in some they're not. So to me, that's more a zoning issue too. And the, I'm trying to get away from the fact of, you know, for us to, you know, dwell into all these legal issues and constitutional issues, but to me, it's a, seems to be a very simple one. We have people who are making money at the state level, you chose to tax it, we're not taxing lawyers or cops working from home, and they're not generating income.
Why not?
Well, because they're not generating, they're not, they're not, they're not generating income on renting their homes and bringing people in and out. It's their home, it's their castle, and they're living in it. I think there's a major decision...
They're using it as a commercial enterprise, which is what the argument has been.
Well, I will, I will say, if I may, I will say that there was a case on Upper Patagansett Road where somebody bought a house and started running a real estate business out of that house, as well as being a short-term rental for, for occupancy. And the zoning board did enforce the zoning there, which was no businesses were allowed, and so they had to stop their real estate business out of the house. So it's, it's different, it's a subtle difference from short-term rentals, but it's, but it has evidence of having been enforced, you know, in the past.
Yeah, and I do think our zoning regulations speak to the kinds of in-home businesses that are permissible, if I'm...
In addition, in a...
So, so I, I like the idea of us dividing the labor here and, you know, beginning to put some meat on the bones of each of these suggested regulations. So, you know, we have 10 of them, and there's eight of us, and even though, I would say, I know that four, five, and six look like no-gos because, but, but I don't mind someone looking into that and just giving us the lowdown on that, because we, again, as Gary said, we need to investigate and, you know, come up with suggestions that are fact-based. So maybe that can just be one sort of a... Anne, you seem interested in those.
I will. I like number five.
You like number five, the permissible zones?
Yeah. I'll look at four, five, and six.
Yeah, that's fine, just so that we know.
I'll deal with three.
And you'll do, so that's great. Actually, I, I had you in mind for, for three. Okay, so, so John will take number three, Anne will take four, five, six. The registration system and the contact information?
I can do that, yeah.
Okay, since you've been, you know, yes, go ahead.
If I may, my, my suggestion was before this regu, suggested regulations.
Right.
I, I don't think we can discuss a regulation until we know what problem we're trying to solve.
Okay.
So, I was suggesting we should have someone argue on behalf of doing nothing, have someone argue on behalf of banning, maybe someone argue on, I think regulations is out, someone argue on behalf of an ordinance, and then we can all split up these new regulations and talk about them. So at one meeting, we can discuss doing nothing, banning, ordinance, and all of the suggested regulations.
Okay. And do remember that at the last meeting, you went through your chart, where we compiled the information from the delegation... we compiled the information from the delegations and so forth, right?
And this is a synthesis of that?
Yes, correct. Um, do you, do you want to wear two hats and, and, and argue the, and, and come forth with information about doing nothing and banning, do you want to, you know, those two, those two possibilities?
That's fine, sure.
You know, um, is that okay?
I, sure.
All right. Um, and I think I'm still going to leave our, with, with Attorney's Marka doing, beginning his legal opinion, I'd still say that I leave that up to you to, um, tackle the, um, the fallout from doing an ordinance, you know, that, so, that's, that was one of the questions, if we, if we enact an ordinance, how does it affect zoning, how does it affect homeowners' associations, et cetera, et cetera? I think that's a, that's, that would be in your purview, I believe, because I, I don't, we're not going to do legal research here, so. Um, okay, so, the permit, a permitting process, where there's actually a fee.
I'll, I'll take that.
Gary?
I'll work, um, also with Greg, because I think those two things are.
Are allied, yes, okay, I, I agree there. Um, enforcement and fines, how, how, I guess, we could.
Sounds like you, Paul. No, just kidding, whatever you, whatever you want.
Pick one. Um, do I have a taker on enforcement and fines?
Just because we're taking this doesn't mean we, we're stating our pros or cons about it.
No, not at all.
We're just trying to get, we're just trying to get background for the committee to give them.
Yes, to help each other, so that we're not all researching everything. Okay, exactly. So, um, Dan, do you, does that seem like an area of interest?
Sure, it seems like a very popular one, so I'll grab that.
Okay.
What's that enforcement you take?
That's enforcement of fines.
Number seven.
And fines. Um, so, inspections, do I have any takers on inspections? And occupancy limits?
Um, why don't I take inspections on, because it seems like that would be part of a permitting.
So, okay, so with you and Gary, uh, you and Greg working together, that would be part of the, okay, um, I'm interested in this kind of a noise and parking issue, I've, I've just been interested in that, so I don't mind tackling some of that, which is kind of outside our regulation, but it's still something that I think we're going to have to wholeheartedly recommend to Board of Selectmen, you know, whether the ordinances need to change or, or whatever, so, um, I don't mind looking at that, that's all.
And I, and I think the parking is one of the biggest issues, it hits people, you know?
Oh, it, it seems to be a major issue, and goes back to public safety and inconvenience and everything else. Occupancy limits, that might, um, I'm not sure about that one.
It seems to fit with, uh, the parking and noise, doesn't it?
Yes.
Kind of regulating behavior.
Or even like septic tanks, does it have, you know, if twenty people are in there every week, does the house have a septic tank that can?
Yeah, I think nine and ten are allowed, do you think those are, I mean, often we have those from a fire marshal, right? So, you think nine and ten are allowed, okay.
Nine and ten are?
Nine and ten are, rather.
So that comes into me?
I think so. And Paul, what did you, what did you decide?
I, I think I've got the free pass on this.
You've got a pass?
Give Paul one.
All right, so, um.
No, I mean, I'm happy to do it, I was waiting for what was left.
Okay, um.
Or we give Paul a ban.
The ban?
Paul, you can help me with this.
I'd be happy to talk.
Possibly with the, uh.
So with the, the income statements, property assessments, adjustments, that issue with, with John, what do you think? It's a, it's a good business issue.
Yeah, it could be an offsetting view too, that's okay.
A lot of lawyers are going to be mad at me.
All right.
I think that's a good place to be.
All right, I think that's good.
I think that's a good place to be.
I think that's good, okay.
Can I just, can I?
Yes, Anne, yes, please.
I like different views, so.
I think it's important when we're looking at this, that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on problems we think we have, but decisions made here, how it makes the town look in ten, twenty, thirty years.
Definitely, yes, yeah, that's, it goes back to our, our discussion about short-term solutions, and then the long haul, what we can do within our, within our knowledge base at this point, okay. Um, all right, so I think I'm going to wrap up number four, five, we're going to schedule some, um, oh, hi.
No one interrupted. At some point when it got, I could make it become small, a statement, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're, we're kind of wrapping up, so, yeah, that's fine, thanks.
How's he going to speak? What's on the agenda?
Stuff for everybody else.
I can, if, I'll, I'll extend public delegations if necessary, but you have a seat until we're, until we're done, thank you very much. Um, so scheduling future meetings, um, so we definitely need to, like, if you look at five C, the timetable for reporting to the Board of Selectmen, we can just make that request and, you know, and Candace, you could communicate that if you would, you know, I don't know what our end date is, but it's not going to be January seventeenth, we're just going to need, you know, probably another couple of months, maybe, I think realistically, in terms of giving, um, all of us a chance to research more, attorneys of market to, um, inform us as to those legal issues, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, yeah, I don't have any endpoint in time, I mean, it's not going to go audit.
What's our budget for having attorneys of market sit here for thirty meetings? I mean, this is, uh.
We'll have to put him at the beginning of the year, send him home. Go ahead, Greg.
I would like to suggest that we have something done on or before May first, I think we really need, going to the community, May first.
Oh, absolutely.
Before we head into another summer season, we need to have reached some kind of a decision.
I'm thinking of giving our.
When I say the community, I mean both sides, renters and.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking of, I was thinking of like a spring, um, deadline, so maybe what would be the second, okay, so second meeting in the month of March for the Board of Selectmen, so that might be the, you know, something like that.
They're going to start budgets.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think we should be well done by March.
Yeah, I mean, even the first meeting, I remember when I had to do, um, uh, American Rescue Plan Fund and do, do that committee work, um, we did it in times before it, the budget hit, exactly around that time, so they were able to listen to a presentation and, and approve or disapprove or whatever, so, I think that could work.
I think we could do a February first finish, right? I mean, what, what are we, we're going to have all the information, we want to make a decision, we're going to have two public hearings between now and then, and.
We still have to schedule that public hearing, so, um, you know, we lose a little bit of time, end of this month, beginning of next, because of holidays, so, um, so anyway, but I, we'll come back to C, but, um, let's, so let's, let's go back to five B, let's go to five B, rather, and do, um, a next regular meeting for us. I'm just going to throw this out there for January eighth, it's a Monday, it is not a holiday, that I can tell on my calendar, so.
I know, I won't be here.
You won't be here, okay. Okay.
Were you?
And, um, any other suggestion for a next meeting where we come back and, um, relate the information that we found on our respective topics? Because Christmas is, you know, Christmas holiday, holiday's coming, sorry, Dan, did I?
I said I'm good with January eighth thereafter.
You're okay, and Anne said she isn't here.
I can send.
That's right, I was thinking.
I can send it with some.
Yes, you can, you can email something if that, if, let's say, if that worked out. Yes, because, you know, the first, you know, Monday, January first is obviously possible, Martin Luther King Day is the fifteenth, um.
I think the eighth works for most of us.
Okay, all right, so that, and that moves it along, huh?
I'm a little jammed up for the rest of the month, I think the twenty-second is too far out.
If we're trying to get done by February first, it's absolutely too far out.
I don't think they're going to be done by February first.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I'd, I'd say the begin, the first meeting of the, of, first Board of Select meeting in March is most, is, 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 um, I think, a possibility.
The fifteenth, I remember.
So that's Martin Luther King Day, so I believe, I'm not, I'm not sure we're open here.
The eighth is really short.
You think so?
I do.
We, we can do the twenty-second as far as, I mean, I was hoping for February first, and I don't know how much we have to do, but.
I don't think it matters, I'm away on the twenty-second.
You are on the twenty-second.
Let's book that then.
Of course, of course it matters, yeah.
You don't have to worry about it.
You have a, you're staying in Airbnb.
Monday helps just in terms of the use of this, of this, um, room, uh, because, uh, you know, we run into planning, and there's water and sewer on Tuesdays, Wednesday's a Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen, basically, Thursday's zoning, so, your Monday is your open day, and because we don't have a set calendar, the Monday has worked for us, you know, um.
So the twenty-second, Madam Chair, is that?
Um.
Or you're not going to be here, you want to do another date, the twenty-ninth?
Yes, okay, that really pushes us out, um. Gary, what are your topics again, or do you think it's, it's too much?
No, I have, I have a, a big project I'm working on, um.
Okay, the work or whatever.
Yeah, 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 so.
About Saturday morning.
I don't know if we can use this one that way.
How about the sixteenth, I mean, Martin Luther King, Monday, the sixteenth.
I don't have the, that's a town calendar in front either, but I.
Does it have to be on Mondays?
It doesn't have to be, it just could, it could be on a Tuesday, but it can't, it can't conflict with, um.
Other meetings.
Other meetings happen, happening here, I mean, a regular meeting we could conceivably use, we're correct, we could use the other room.
Conference room one.
Conference room one. Maybe Tuesday, the sixteenth, I don't know, um, planning meetings, do you remember if they're, um, planning meetings are, uh, third Tu, third Tuesdays of the month, um, Brooke, would you know that off the top of your head?
Rather than look, it's on the tab, yeah.
Yes, if you have that handy, that's great.
Sixteenth works for me.
And that kind of keeps us out of here, you know, on the fifteenth, which is a holiday. I know water and sewer won't meet until the twenty-third, it's the fourth, so it's the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, what does H do?
I can't get the meeting dates, can you guys?
Oh, I could just look at my phone too.
Inland Wetlands, it's on the sixteenth.
Okay. And they're in conference room one?
No.
Oh, we could still do that, okay, I mean, that's, it's a tight space in there, but, um, I don't expect big delegations at that meeting either, because it's a working meeting.
Sixteen.
The sixteen, Tuesday the sixteenth?
Sixteenth's all right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, why don't, why don't we try that, and, um, uh, you never know, two inland wetlands could, um, you know, could cancel a meeting as well, or switch location, but they, sometimes they need the space in here for.
That's the only, that's the only thing that's.
And what time is their meeting at?
Seven.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
It is at seven, okay, so let's, let's try the sixteenth in the, um, in the conference room, that's fine, okay, for, so, so we're set with, uh, five B, that's the regular meeting, so it'll be, uh, January sixteenth, it's a Tuesday.
Sixteen, later, there's a.
Yes, your room?
Seven o'clock.
At seven PM in, in the conference room, most likely, unless there's a cancellation of the other meeting here. Um, okay, and then, for now, let's, let's think about a first meeting in, in March, I think, for, um, for, uh, let's see, in twenty-four, the first meeting of the Board of Selectmen in the month of March would be the sixth, and their second meeting would be, uh, the twentieth of March, so, we can even decide that, you know, maybe next meeting, because it'll be ahead of, it'll, it'll, yeah.
So we'll need a public hearing in February?
That's my next question, so we've got to get that hearing in.
That'll be in February then, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, hang on, so.
So we can do the public hearing in January, right?
Yes, absolutely, I think that we should, um.
End of the month?
Maybe the end of that month, so, how about, um, January twenty-ninth?
That's good.
That sounds good.
It's like two weeks after our meeting.
Yes, two weeks after our meeting, we try for the public hearing, then that gives the twenty-first.
Yes, I am.
Yes, public hearing, and we'll do that here, because we need to have the audio visual here, we tried it over there in the high school, and we were abandoned by the audio visual folks over there, so I know we can at least record something here, you know. We will not be able to record when we are in that conference room, but it's such a working meeting that it's probably best, because we're going to be, you know, showing each other our suggested language, but we will obviously have minutes for that meeting.
I'm going to, if you're okay with it, maybe go right to my computer, look at the calendar, double-check on the sixteenth, occasionally we have outside groups.
Yes, okay.
Calendar.
And then the same thing with the twenty-ninth, uh, for the public hearing, that would be great, thanks. Okay, so while, uh, Brooke is doing that, um, I'll just do quick, uh, reports, uh, for, Gary, do you have anything, uh, otherwise that you'd like to report?
No, I think I have.
I, I don't have anything except for one little bit of information, which is, um, as you know, CCM had its convention recently, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, um, and there was, uh, I believe it was, um, Attorney Carrie Olson gave an update, uh, legal update on, on short-term rentals, um, and I understand that as of about maybe mid-week or so, um, the, um, the notes from that, it's, um, the PDF, it will be, will be available online, it's CCM, but you have to have a login, I happen to have a login, so I will just forward whatever, whenever that becomes available, I will forward it to you, and she's very good with everything, she has great presentations at CCM, um, I'm sure she's talking about the Supreme Court case and other issues, and that may be very helpful for all of us. Um, so that's, that's basically, uh, my report, otherwise, I just, um, I just, and I just wanted to say one thing, uh, we'll do that, you know what, we'll, how, how is that?
All good.
All good, okay, perfect. So bef, I will, I will at this point have the gentleman that wanted to speak, speak, because, um, then I can conclude my report, so come on up and state your name and address for the record, sir, thank you.
Sorry about that, uh, my name is Joe Malorba, um, we do have a few, a few properties here in town, um, and I technically do live in Old Lime, right around the corner, um, I just have a few sort of, uh, observations, um, John had mentioned that, um, the value of a property is directly affected by how well the short-term rental does, we've had short-term rentals rentals for quite a while, um, and I've found that, um, the income I, is derived from a short-term rental is actually much higher from somebody that's not commercial, but somebody that's personal, um, and somebody that's part of the community, that really helps guests feel like they're, they're traveling to a home away from home, um, and so, um, it's all, uh, not so easy to, to make cut and dry, Greg mentioned somebody on Upper Patagonic with a real estate office, that was me, um, no, it's not, no, and I, and that's also a little complex, um, I have four children, six and under, I felt like having my office there, which nobody comes to visit, would allow me to keep a closer eye on the Airbnb guests, and make sure that there wasn't any parties, and be able to meet the neighbors and help them see that I'm a local person, um, I bought a house on Lake Patagonic so that I could have a place to bring my children, I wanted to subsidize the cost of having that by short-term renting it, and, um, with a short-term rental, I'm a little bit more able to, uh, make sure somebody doesn't absolutely destroy my place, and so it kind of gave me the ability to bring my family someplace and also create some income. Um, but we believe very, very strongly in being good neighbors, and, um, every neighborhood is very different, um, so, um, I really appreciate you guys putting all the effort that you guys are putting into this, and I know it's not an easy decision, um, I am totally for some kind of registration, um, I think it'd be a lot easier personally if it was a flat fee, um, I have a lot of commercial and residential properties, and filling out those forms every year are a nightmare, um, and it could technically punish someone that, um, you know, doesn't have a mortgage, or somebody that's inherited the property that might not have high income expense, like, interest expenses, that maybe somebody that just purchased it has. Um, but I appreciate, I truly appreciate you, I think everybody here has been very articulate and, uh, put a lot of thought into this, and I want to thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, um, so, um, I just wanted to conclude my report, not only about CCM, but I just wanted to, um, say that, uh, as a conclusory remark, I, in, in, in listening to the initial, um, uh, delegations this evening, I, I just wanted to point out that, um, I, I just wanted to point out that for myself and certainly as a group, I, I don't feel that we have, we have directed our energies to any one residence, any one short-term rental. We've heard so much over the course of the last couple of months, we've, and we made that point a number of times, that it's not just Oak Grove. We've heard, we've heard, you know, other complaints in other areas. We've heard good things about other areas. So we've had a mixed bag of everything. And anything we're doing, the intention is to, you know, guide the town through this very thorny and difficult legal issue. That's how I view it. And I think Gary shares that, shares that view, maybe, that it's a thorny issue, maybe Attorney's America as well. And we're, you know, we're, we're looking to do something for the benefit of the entire town. So, so please understand that. And I, you know, your remarks are certainly welcome, but it's, it's just that, you know, when, when you said what you did say, I, I just wanted to point out that, you know, each of us has different views on, on the topic. But certainly, our overall charge is to do something for the benefit of the whole town. And it would affect every, you know, everyone. So, so with that, I will, I'm done with my report. Any last comments by any members of the board this evening? Any thoughts? Okay. Yes, I'll take a motion and a second. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. And thanks so much, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.